I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The mission of Sunnybrook School District 171 is to maximize student achievement by cultivating critical thinking skills, innovative instructional practices, and a collaborative school, home, and community partnership. Roll call.
Ms. Stewart?
Here.
Thompson?
Present.
Ambrose?
Present.
Burks?
Present.
Andrew?
Present.
We're at item F, requesting a motion to approve the regular board of education reading minutes of October 20th, 2025. Closed session begins on October 20th, 2025. November expenses and October payroll in the count of $1,851,054.65, send as present.
Motion.
Send.
Motion, brother Stewart, second one, Ambrose, Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Burks?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
We're at item G, communications. No having. There's nothing. Alright, we're at item H, informational items. Anybody have anything? No? Uh, I have board reports.
So tonight, so tonight, Dr. Luggles, and Dr. McGowan, and myself, we're going to do a collaboration, we're going to point out on the IAR scores, but first and foremost, my favorite time of year is here, December 3rd, Gingerbread House, 3:15, 5:15, at Heritage Middle School. I also want to give kudos to our community as a whole. Parentage Conference was last week and they were really well attended. Probably one of the best attendings I've seen over the past 20 years I've been in the district, so I'm very pleased for that. I know that we rose there to face great out and it appears to be well received by our community and that I'm grateful for. So can we have Mr. Schrader present first and then we present? And then both of us go?
Yeah, that's right. So, Mr. Schrader, Chief School Mrs. Pruscher.
Well, while Dr. McGowan is doing that, good evening, everybody, and very, very happy you were able to get tickets before they sold out to the 2025 levy presentation. So happy to see you here. So without thank you, Dr. Mike. So, um, here we are on our journey that started back in August for the budget and levy cycle. We are now in November where we adopt the levy and the levy resolutions that go along with that. And even though there's an item there for December, all that means is that yours truly needs to file the levy with the state and county before the last Tuesday in December, but I like to do that right away because that's not something you want to forget. So, so this, again, you know, we're at the end of this budget and my levy cycle. So, in order to kind of understand what we're, what's going on here, just three years of financial data, you can kind of see, as mentioned in this budget presentation, we are cash basis. So it's not unusual, we have a big expense one year, or you have bond proceeds in one, one year, and then the expenses come the following year. So what you see is a fluctuation, you have a beginning fund balance in the beginning of 2023 of a little over 15 million, and then it went down in 2024, down again in 2025, then we had the bond proceeds, and so we finished up with just under 21. But then this summer's all the summer construction projects that you see going on, those bills are coming due, you're seeing those every month. And so we're protecting with the revenues and budget for this year, we should end up kind of finishing up with 17.7 as a cash fund balance that would cover all the funds. And that's just a little bit under a year of expenditures. So healthy fund balance and, but reasonable, given everything, I think it's, it's about right where we want to be. So, the, what is the levy exactly? Well, the levy is, is a request, once you've done the, once you've adopted the budget, the levy is, we talked about in revenues, revenues for the district come from the form of property taxes, as you see there, that's what was budgeted, just a little over eight billion, which is almost 40% of the revenue budget. And then other local, but they're really not local, local, it's for state corporate, personal property replacement tax, federal E-rate money, so interest that we earn on any of our, our cash fund balances. So that accounts for 3%. The state's evidence-based funding accounts for 45% for us, and then the categorical grants from the state, transportation, special education, and any other state grants, practice program and such, is about 5% of our budget. And then the federal grants, titles one through four, Esser's on there, I probably could take that out, that's no longer, we talked about that in the budget, but Esser used to be funded from the federal government, but that was just temporary. And then IDEA for special education counts for about 4% of our budget. And then any other federal programs such as, you know, the food program, Medicaid and so forth, again, 4% of our budget. Bond proceeds, we have none budgeted for this year, and we were, you know, looking to keep it that way. So what the levy is asking for is for the property tax owners in, in business and residential in Lansing and Lindwood that fall within the district boundaries, to say, okay, hey, you know, we've done the budget and here is the levy requesting the money. So when you ask for a levy, it's just you're asking for. Think about, you know, when your, your child wants to go to the movies and they want a whole bunch of popcorn, or, you know, they ask for more and you know they're not going to get it, but they just, they end up with what they're going to get. So the similar kind of thing here is, you have what's a levy, is based on the equalized assessed value of all the properties in our district boundaries. So you see the trend going back the last five years, where that's gone, you know, from 2020 and then it went down in 21, went down again in 2022. As everyone knows, it was a readjustment by the county for reassessing property values. And then so you see that reflected, kind of bouncing around in the low twos there for 20, for the last three years. And then so their levy is what you get asked for, and then the levy amount or the extension is what you actually receive. And so you can see the requested levy amount going back to 2020, and it just kind of goes up incrementally over the years, and we are, you know, on that same, just basically same pattern for year after year for requesting money as salaries and benefits and all the costs of doing business with the school district go up, and of course, and we ask for additional dollars as well. So you can see the levy extended, so the amounts are in that fourth column, and then what is that percent increase from the prior year? Well, if you notice there, the increase from the prior year is always based on the prior year's extension plus any new property. There's not a whole lot of new growth, you know, within our district boundaries, so the percent increase from the prior year of our levy dollars really kind of stays the same, very much tied closely with CPI. We are not allowed to get more than CPI for existing property, new property is a whole other thing. So, so we get CPI, which this year is 2.9%. If you ever have or request more than 5% of the previous year's tax extension, you have to do a truth and taxation hearing, but that has never been the case in my tenures here, and that is not the case this year. So we did not have a truth and taxation hearing because the amount requested is less than 5% from, from last year's extension. So the question then becomes, okay, Sunnybrook, where's this money going? Naturally, most of it goes to the education fund, and which is direct instruction, teacher salary benefits, and, and all the things, materials and activities, and then the rest go for building, transportation, and all those other categories that we've talked about over in the budget for the $8.7 million levy that is being asked. And then debt service has pretty much been the same every year, and that is separate from the tax levy there. As part of the state law for the levy presentation, and we've always done this anyway, we've always taken pride in Sunnybrook being transparent with the finances, with the community members that support us. So the fund balances is, you know, what are the fund balances in the levy presentation? Well, here they are, but again, we've always presented this. So the fund balances are, you see what they were in the beginning of this school year, and then you see are budgeted and projected amounts, and you end up back on the bottom right in the corner with the total fund balance roughly a little over 17.7 million. Again, just a little bit less than a year's worth of expenses. And the reason you want to have a little bit in fund reserves is, you know, you never know the collection of property taxes, because you guys have probably seen in the papers, there's sometimes delays where they put it off another month, or two months, or three months, or, you know, God forbid, a, a, another, you know, pandemic, or some, some extraordinary events could happen. So you always want to have healthy fund balance to get you through troubled times, but of course, you don't want too much excess of fund balance. So it's a good finding the right proper balance, and hopefully you agree that this work had a good balance here. So what you see here is, the certificate of tax levy is the document that will be filed with the county, along with, there's several resolutions that you see on the board motion, such as the cost reduction factor. That means, okay, we're asking for the amount that we're asking for, 8.7. If we aren't able to get it all, how, how do we reduce it among the funds? Basically, you take most of it out of the education fund because that's where most of the money goes. And then it also asks a next certificate, truth and taxation hearing, that's one of the documents you approve, cost, cost resolution, and you know, about 6% of tax revenue is not collected every year, so we'll adjust for that. So those are some of the supporting documents that go with the certificate of tax levy, but with your approval tonight, the certificate of tax levy will be again asking the taxpayers for this money, it will be filed with the county, and like I said, filed not in the last week of December, but almost, so hopefully by the end of this week, we will have this all, all done and taken care of. So, I don't think enough can be said. You see the, the school, the, the buildings and facilities, the staff that we have, there's no way, I don't think that any of us on the school board, administrative, or school community can thank the residents and the businesses enough for their support of Sunnybrook School District 171. I believe that we have a lot of great things going on in this school district, and I'm so grateful for their support, especially on a day like today for the levy presentation. So just want to say thank you to everybody. And with that, as always, if you have any questions, I would be more than happy to answer them. And thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Eric Neilhouse Davis and Dr. Lily Armstrong.
So tonight, we're going to present to the community as a whole the results of our students' status assessment. We always start with the equity continuum journey, and if you notice, we always, if you're new to this, we always show those two pictures because the first part of this is not about the scores. First part of this is exactly what is the equity, what is the continuum services that we offer, but more important, I need you to understand what that is. We're trying to make sure that all the students in the district are given the same opportunity, whether they have English as a second language, a disability, whether we are 72% population African American, or 20% Hispanic, and what about the other 70%? So the state always asks us, what do we do to make sure all of our students are on the same core? That may not make it everything equal, so some things have to shift. So that's what the first part of this presentation talks about.
So there's three areas that we get scored on when it comes to the continuum. It's student learning, the learning conditions, and elevating educators, which you'll see the breakdown as we go through the presentation. And how this is scored, and again, keep in mind, when we're looking at the next handful of slides, we're looking at gaps, not scores. Okay, so this isn't proficiency, this isn't growth, this is if we have gaps or do not have gaps. And this is the rating scale, one through four, and just know it's all mathematically based, so it is actually, it is possible to go higher than four, because you are going to see a couple of scores on that one. So how we did overall, for student learning, we actually did increase, so we are approaching that four in our student learning. With our learning conditions, we did go down just a snitch, but we start, still are in that three, which means minimal gaps. And then our elevating educators were at 3.9, we did not go up or down from that. So looking at our breakdown, starting at first with...
So the very first one is the 1.0, and that is for kindergarten readiness. So let me explain to you what the kindergarten readiness is. When our kindergarten students enter school in August, we have first dates speculations, we have 40 days to assess them. We assess, do they know their colors, can they count, do they know their letters, just a variety of things. Keep in mind, all of our students do not attend to preschool. For some of them, kindergarten is their first experience. So we have a 1.0, that does seem low, I would agree with you, but know this, we assess the kids when they begin their school year, and then we have to assess them again at the end of the school year. But by the time the students take the IAR and all the IAR data is in, the kids are not assessed a second time. So this is what we first assess them as when they enter outdoors in August. So that's probably going to consistently stay a one. If you ever go back and take a look at our past presentations, they were ones that swear.
So the, the next ones are, so the next one is our IAR, and again, when we're talking about this, this isn't how we did on IAR, this is saying, how did our students do with those subgroups, being between the demographics and special populations. Having a 3.8 means our students are performing equally across the board.
With that 3.8, those are also for our students who attend school out of district as well. We have a total population, who have been over 1,000 students. We do not physically have 1,000 who attend classes here within Nathan Hill and Heritage, but all of Sunnybrook's student scores, whether you take the IAR, or there is an abbreviated version of the IAR called DMM, which some of our special needs students take, all of their scores are calculated within that 3.8. And I think that's important for people to understand, because I'm not sure if our community always understands that kids who don't physically attend our schools, if their scores impact us. They do.
And then there are other ones, the key one, you know, our ELL progress proficiency, which you will see again when we actually talk about the school report card. But yeah, we are moving our students out of ELL by passing them through their access testing. And then with eighth grade enrolled in algebra and passing Algebra I again, this time we are looking at, are we equitably putting our subgroups and things like that through our algebra program? And at a four, we, that means any student is eligible, no matter subgroup or special population. Next, going into our learning conditions, the main focus here is looking at student attendance, expulsion rates, out of school suspensions, in school suspensions. And again, as we said, mathematically, you can kind of get over four, which shows we are not, with all these, even though the out of school suspension is the 3.1, what this is all saying is, we are not disproportionately having any negative consequences to our students or positive consequences based on subgroup or demographic.
Unless it's we're not suspending one participant, participant group over our number. So race is not a factor if they suspend.
Now this one, with our learning conditions, this is one that we know we have room to grow as a community. And I, and I want to stress that community piece here, because as you can see, this is actually how is our, our participation rate in the five essential survey that we do every year. Our student response rate, we pride ourselves in keeping that four. We are monitoring to make sure our students do take that, and that's fourth through eighth grade. Our teacher response rate has actually gone up a little bit, you're going to see some numbers again, because that is a, a factor in our school report card. But our biggest area for growth here is our parent response rate. We always have been near that minimum of where the state needs us to be able to report data.
We currently have 756 families in our district. To get a score on the state report card for both Nathan Hill or H M S, you have to have 20% of the population. So you're looking at essence, we're getting about 140 families to take the five essential survey. We have 700 despite the emails. So we, we are asking our community, please help us, your input is very valuable, because when you look at this, you see the 1.0, you would think that no one's taking it. Yeah, we have 140 families that's doing it. But the problem that we also have is that families, if you have a student at Nathan Hill, you have a student at Heritage, you have to do it twice, one for Nathan Hill, one for Heritage. And we've also, often have pushed back for some of our families who only want to take it one time. I understand that, I respect that, but again, we beg you to please do it for both. Because when you go, when you start going through this, I'm not quite sure if it's fair to the Sunnybrook community as a whole, if you have 756 parents and only 140 of them answer.
Which does lead into our other learning conditions. So these are clumps of questions, so for most of you, I think all of you at some point have taken the five essential survey. Okay, there, it's basically a handful of questions fall into all these different buckets. So how we're sworn out, so parent involvement, involve family, you can see here that we've got some room to grow. We are doing a lot as a district to make sure our parents are involved, but the reality of it is, this is some of the feedback we're giving through that five essential survey. I will say that influence on decisions, that score has gone up. That was kind of sitting at that 1.5, and it was 1.2 a couple of years before, but we are seeing an increase in that, specifically in this school. But again, the more people who take the survey, we think we will see an increase in the scores. And then elevating our educators, basically you see here, we're excelling in several of these areas, the teachers out of field, teacher experience, and teacher evaluations. Even though that one, the educators and student demographics, that basically means, if you were to walk around the building, does our faculty match the demographics of our students? That number has increased over the years. We are taking the steps to make and have our faculty match the demographics of our students. And again, that number was lower in the past, and we have each year seen that increase. So any questions on the equity journey?
I have one, two questions. I know you mentioned, what's the name of the survey?
The five essentials.
The five essentials. Is there any way, if a family does have multiple children in the household, that, that can be combined so they don't have to say multiple? Do we create it?
No, the state creates it, or the state gives us links, so they have to do it.
My other question, we're, I saw the numbers below for the community engagement. Just as a suggestion or an idea, have we ever sent text e-blast out or messages to kind of keep the community engaged, and how was that received?
If you look on our parents square, and when we communicate, how many people, we have a lot of parent engagement when they come to, like I just said, they came to parentage conferences, they come to family literacy night, so we, we have parent engagement, it's always room for improvement, improvement on that level. But we do do massive blast telephone calls, we do communicate with parents all the time to keep them informed of what's going on.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you had a question, but regarding the kindergarten readiness, you mentioned kind of consistently stayed at a one. And I know we do have preschool, is there any plans to expand the preschool program for our students' attendance?
Okay, so let me explain, explain the type of preschool program we have. I know it's called preschool for all. It's called preschool for all. Technically speaking, though, however, the state has given us guidelines, so people have to meet certain qualifications to enter into the program. So if you're asking me that we have plans to do a regular preschool, no, not at that time, not at this time, because I'm not quite sure what that funding would look like. But the preschool for all, so we have two preschools. We have early childhood special education program, that's for three to five-year-olds. You also have with the preschool for all for three to five-year-olds, but again, it's, it's all based upon, it's a rule, it's, it's a, it's a set criteria, a very specific one that we have to answer to the state. So I don't really know how to answer your question, Mr. Burks, but we do have a preschool, it's limited. I really can't tell you that in the future Sunnybrook would ever have one that you would think of like a tiny tot, because those are not state, state, state rules that we work within.
Okay, so now we're going to jump over to the actual school report card that we have every year the state releases. It's just a couple reminders. So this is the breakdown of how we're ultimately scored at the end. 75% of the score is based on academics, where 25% is the school quality and student success. So you can see the breakdown there of now even all the subcategories. For example, ELA math, ELA and math growth equals 50% of the score, the total score of the total pie, of the final calculations, proficiency is another 15%. All the way through, you can see the different breakdowns. There are the three categories, for those who have seen the presentation in the past, the three stuff, those categories were supposed to be added this year by the state. The state did not add those, it's still a future pending, so I did keep them included in there in case anybody goes, hey, what happened to those three categories that the state was supposed to have been added? So you will see as we go through how this is all broken.
Okay. So we're going to do this school by school. So we are judged on, we are assessed on two things, our proficiency and our growth. If you take a look, you, you're going to see where we compare as a school, as a district, and on state level. ELA has always been a strong suit for us. Red is the area that we need to work on. Yellow is our kids that are on the cusp. The two different shades of green means they've met expectations or they've excelled. Students who are assessed in this area are grades three and four, this is what you have to remember, we still have to set the foundation K to two. Even though they are tested in third and fourth, K two is a very solid foundation. And if you see, we have work to do. We do have very much of work to do in this year.
No, the only thing I do want to put a preference on, for those who've seen our presentations in the past, where we normally can compare year to year, the state did change the cut scores this year, so that's why you're not seeing a year to year comparison.
Well, our time data will be lacking probably for the next couple of years because the state is in influx right now if they change the cut scores, but they're still also working on how the report card is going to be presented. As this Dr. McGowan had showed earlier, they were supposed to add those other three indicators, and they still haven't added them. So we're... So we're still waiting on that, too. But with this, what we determined at Nathan Hale is that we knew this based on our star data, that we were going to need some things put into place to address some of the gaps and the discrepancies we were seeing. So Mr. Kent and his wonderful staff sat down and put together the reading program, which we talked about last year. So far, so good. We're seeing definitely gains. Are they the gains to take us out of the red to the orange? Yes. But are they taking us from the orange to the green? Not yet, but we're still continuing that into this year. So we started it last year, and they did it all the way through May. Then we picked it up again when we did our enrichment in summer. And then we did it again in Jump Start, and we're continuing it again in our win program. Mr. Kent, Mrs. Cambrick, and I will be meeting tomorrow to discuss what we're going to be doing for the second half of the year, and whether or not we're going to continue this after we're looking at data that we show from our students. So this is our ELA proficiency for our Heritage students. And if you see, Heritage is on mark with everything. They are actually above the state average when it comes to proficiency in ELA for the school, which is wonderful. The state average is 41%, and Heritage, I'm going to round up, is 45%. So we're doing very well when it comes to our ELA proficiency here in comparison to the state and then obviously with the district. Then we move into our ELA growth. As I stated before, we already knew this going into this year, and actually towards the end of last year, which is why we started to put those programs together. We know we have work to do. The one thing I do want to stress when it comes to the area of growth within the state is that it's not growth from student to student. So Lori takes the test, it's not my growth from year to year. It's how Lori scored in comparison to every other student in the state that got that same score. And then someone sets the low, someone sets the high. So it's really not necessarily individual person growth. It's growth based upon how others perform in the state. And again, as you can see, Heritage's ELA growth is 60.5%, 61%, and the state's is 50%. So Heritage is definitely making the growth and the proficiency in ELA that we want to see as we are scoring higher than the state average. As we go into math proficiency, we already know this because that's why we asked if we could kindly have an instructional coach to assist us in math. We have some work to do in our math scores. And they just speak for themselves. We are working adamantly to try to put that together as Mr. Kent and his team and myself are working to put together a math program similar to what we're doing in reading to address the discrepancies that we're seeing in math. As well as the same we will be doing over here with HMH. They are doing better than, they're doing better, but we still have work that we need to do awesome. And the same thing applies for our math growth as we stated for ELA. But again, we are working hard to put a program together to start this January to do the same thing that we did for reading across the street. And again, with our math growth, we are in comparison with Heritage pretty close to what the state is doing.
So in essence, we know we have work to do at Nathan Hale. Heritage, we're still trying to move from good to great. We're consistent. But we do recognize that we have work to do. And we have put things in place. We are working on things collectively as a whole, with our whole staff at Nathan Hale and Heritage. And we can discuss that at a later time today. But we are really decent place to help our students from kindergarten all the way to eighth grade. But we have to be doing something. Our teachers are not magic, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, they're phenomenal. Ms. Cambrick, I mean, the teachers are somewhere down the line. The foundation is being laid for them because we are doing well at the middle school.
And with our science proficiency, if you notice, as a whole, we are working hard to improve that score. One of the deficiencies that we have is just the fact that, and you know this because you just helped us to adopt our new science curriculum, is that for quite some years, at least 10, possibly 12, the district did not have an official curriculum that they used in the elementary school. So they were coming here, and it was solely just relying on our middle school teachers to put that foundation in there. And last year was our first year with our new science resource that we embedded. And so we're hoping to see that growth as they come in. The science test itself only is tested in fifth and eighth grade, and then again in 11th grade. So Heritage or Nathan Hale won't see a score, it's just HMH. Then we have our ELA. We don't have enough students to have a score per school, so that is redacted. I'm sorry, ELL students. So that's redacted. But we do have enough students to have a district score. This has to do, as Dr. McGowan had stated earlier, about the number of students that we're testing out of our ELL program. Obviously, we want to see more of our students testing out because that's what the state wants us to do. But based upon that, the state average of testing students out in adequate time is at 7%, and we are at 8%. So we are above the state norm. Still, we can work on making testing a little bit better, but we are definitely doing good.
So one thing we have to do is get our kids in school. So if you take a look at 2022, we have a high absenteeism rate. I'm not going to say I'm very proud of the 19%, but it's a far cry from the 36% that we hear. So we are making gains. We've heard Ms. Green talk about the absenteeism programs and what we're doing. But also need people to understand, we start talking about absenteeism, that doesn't necessarily equate to a student not being in school. We have students sometimes who, for whatever reason, school starts at 7:45, they show up at 9:30. And if you do that consistently, those times add up and equates to a whole day. And that's how we have to report it to the state. So we are looking at, and we are currently working with multiple parents and students to try to help them get to school on time. But we're making steps, small steps, but we're getting there. Nathan Hale absenteeism is different than HMS. Nathan Hale is typically because mom didn't bring them to school. HMS is because my students just don't always come to school in a timely fashion. But they do get here, I mean, they never miss a day for house day. So we're trying to figure out how we can make house day and that kind of motivation an everyday thing. But again, if you notice, if you take a look at the little grid that's there on the chart, you can see we're making growth in that area as well. This goes back to the five essential survey that we spoke about earlier. You can take a look at, when it talks about HMS, we excel there. The staff there takes the five essential surveys, no problem. Nathan Hale, we have 66%. State would like us to be like a 75%, so we have some work to do over at Nathan Hale. But we are grateful for those who did take it. And we look forward to watching and waiting to see if we're going to take it for us next year or this year.
Okay, so with all that said, so we have all these subcategories of the data that drives our final score for the state. So how does this all break down? When they compile all of our scores, you can fall into these five buckets. Okay, so basically, the key ones being the top 10% in the state, commendable, which is the bulk. Targeted, which you can still be in that good range. But you have a subgroup that is in the bottom 5% of schools. Comprehensive is that bottom 5%, the place you really don't want to be hanging out. And intensive is a new category, but again, that's multiple years. And you can see the cut scores. That cut score has kind of shrunk towards the middle a little bit. 81.99 actually is a lower score than last year, but that 38.71 did go up. So how did we score? So this is where we are for each building. This, if you actually do, if you take a look at the map, this is about dead center of the state when it comes to commendable, which is great, which means we've hit our adequate progress throughout the year in all of our subcategories or in all the categories. And we have no subcategories that are in that deeper deficiency, which is what put us on targeted, which we do not want to be in. So we did come out as commendable per the state on the school report card.
So we do know we have work to do, and we are diligently doing our work. So we have a new curriculum in math and a new curriculum in science. Now, you have your ups and your downs with your curriculums, getting people trained, having them buy into the system. So we're working on that. And again, we are grateful to the school board for allowing us to secure a math coach as very first in the math curriculum because she used to work for the math company. We're looking at new ways of how to move some of our staff around to help support other staff members who may not feel so secure in the content area. We're doing standard-based grading for K five. Kudos to Mr. Kent and Dr. Vos for all the hard work they put into that. Believing that they made me buy into the standard-based grading mindset. And it appears to be working, and I'm so grateful. We have a solid core of parents at Nathan Hale who's made all, we had about nine meetings, emails, and they made every single meeting. So proud of them, but I'm also proud of their input. And that's why I can speak so candidly about parent-teacher conversations because we put signs up in the hallways, and we were able to show parents and talk to them about where their students fall at on that chart progress. But I'm also very proud of the standard-based screening of where we at right now because if I am not believing, my team is hopefully, that it helps us build and establish a homeschool collaboration with our families. A lot of times, we always constantly get with the parents, how do I help my child? What do I need to do? Okay, well, now the standard-based report card espels it out. It also assists our staff because one of the things that we found out is that our students weren't doing the very best, especially in the area of math, because the teachers didn't get to the content that was on the test. So sometimes when our students were actually, they were seeing for the very first time a specific content now and when they got the test, that's not a good look. And you can't think our students are going to do well on something that we didn't instruct them on. So with the standard-based screen, we've also started to deeper dive into our curriculum in math and making them cross-curricular, and what we can do just to use the whole day more. And kudos to Mr. Kent for listening to me and buying into my over-the-topness because I can be over the top. So we've got science days going on, we have math days. And last year, we had fathers come out, which I need to talk to you about, Mr. Burks, because our fathers were super, super, they were super cute, super handsome about how they felt about math. Like, but what it did was it showed, I think our students a lot of times are so used to mom, to moms always saying, oh, let me do this, let me do that, just to see the look on our kids' faces last year when the dads were helping us do the math. It was just very touching and just very nice to see. So we're hoping to do that again this year. And then we have a, you know, we have a new SEL curriculum over at Nathan Hale. But we're keeping our houses here, and our houses are going strong because the houses are helping us build staff around, cohesive just for our staff alone. And it's just a nice thing to do. Ms. Cambrick is going to talk about some of the things that we even did last week for the houses. And we're looking to see what we can do to move some more staff initiatives over to Nathan Hale as well. But again, you have to think about all of that plays into our report cards. Happy teachers, invigorated teachers, people who come to work. Their day, you did give us some content instructions to help them go from good to great. So we're working on a multitude of things.
Thank you.
You have good questions?
I have one question. Just regarding the data, do we have data even within the district that shows kids that attended Nathan Hale from kindergarten through?
I am working on that right now. Yes, I have been working on that. It's been an ongoing system for me to put that in there. But yes, sir, we are working on that, and my intent is to have that by the end of this year.
I have another question. For the kids in regards to math, what percentage of our children are getting to the rate?
So we don't have to ask about children anymore. When we hit to, we tried tutoring, as you know, two years in a row. And what we found with the tutoring is that we were only able to reach maybe 20, 30 kids. And we have over 1,000 students. That 20 and 30 wasn't really making an impact for us. That's why we started to look at doing something different. That's why we started asking about the math coach. Does it have the kids right here in the building? And we'll also take a look at how we structured that in our NTSAS or, some people call it RTI. It's the same thing, just a different terminology. And what we're doing right there in the school environment because another thing that we found, especially at Heritage Library School, basketball season comes around, they don't want to go to tutoring.
And it becomes punitive, and then we don't want our students to feel like that.
So we had to take a dump of that and see what we'd be doing because I'm not going to say that math tutoring wasn't beneficial for all kids, just wasn't enough of our curriculum. And again, we may start out with 30 kids, but I'm going to be honest, if you're doing basketball season, I'd be lucky if I get two of them to stay.
The standard saying is that an interventionist slash tutoring will affect 30 students. A coach can impact 1,000 students because they're working with the teacher to build the capacity so the teachers can build it within the day, and then they don't have to worry about missing out on the activities that happen. Part of that moving to the standard-based grading is to address that situation. We're focusing on the standard, we're emphasizing it, and then the teachers are providing differentiated instruction within their classroom. So you're going to start seeing a lot more things happening, not only at Nathan Hale, but here also thanks to Ashley Smith. Centers that are being put in so that students, teachers are able to work with groups of five or groups of two individually while they're doing the I do, the we do, you do method. So the teachers teach the standard based on grade level. Then they do that, it's called the I do. The teacher models it, they show it, then they do a we do together with the whole group, and then they send them to do the you do. And during that you do time, whether they're doing independent work or they're working in centers, the teacher then pulls students back and does independent work, whether they're doing reading assessments with them individually or working as a whole group. And we're going to start embedding with the help of Ms. Washington and our math coach, more game-based things for math so that the students can see real-life application for it.
We're just trying to find a different way to make math fun and make math realistic. Because what we've learned is that our students just think, they have this perception that math is just 42 minutes a day, where math is all day, everything. So that's why we started up a natural literacy. We took our kids down to the federal. We took the kids down to the federal server and just the conversations that they had about that, about trying to be business man. So we're trying a more realistic approach just to get them going. And like I told you earlier, we're going to take that same financial literacy approach. We're going to take it over to Nathan Hale in January because we really do have them up and running here now. And we're also, we're starting to just teach our teachers how to do math again. You know, just how to make math fun. Because I'm going to be very honest, not everyone who teaches math is comfortable teaching math.
One of the things we realized last year is I tried to co-teach with the teachers as much as I can. And I was doing a co-teaching with Ms. Barrett across the street, and this was a couple of years ago. And here I had the beakers in my hand because I had to take it from a St. John, and all the students thought I was doing a science experiment. And I said, I really love that you guys made that comment because it just shows me how much we need to really focus on. As Dr. Pettis alluded to earlier, is that cross-curricular, allowing the students to see. I said, I understand why you think it's science, but this is actually a math assignment. We're going to be doing measurements and volume and so forth. And the students were like, ah! But it's just getting that cross-curricular, and as Dr. Pettis just said, seeing that math is everywhere. It's not just isolated, it's math, it's everywhere.
And at this point, we've taken our students with disabilities. We've moved them and integrated them more into the general curriculum so they can have more exposure to the general curriculum because before, not all songs were isolated. But again, they all are taking the same test. So now it's about showing them how to do the math. They have to use a calculator, but at least giving them a playing field that they can actually try to succeed.
My question regarding the math coach, I know we have the math coach of great achievement of four. Do we have a plan to bring a math coach into the middle school? And if not, what are we doing for those students in the middle?
So glad you asked because I have a answer for that, Mr. Burks. So I've thought about that, I really have. So what we're doing is, right now, we have a teacher who is National Forest certified in the area of math. She's also our gifted teacher. And math is just precious. So what we have her doing here now, she meets with the math coach every Wednesday for about 45 minutes, and they have an opportunity to collaborate. But then I have Ms. Washington, that's our gifted teacher. So she does some co-teaching here at the middle school to help those, to help our teachers out here because we don't want those kids to feel like, or those teachers to feel like they're not getting support. So she's supporting primarily HMS and then the K two teachers as well, okay? But then also with But then also with that, she's pulling out some of our little more gifted and rich math students and then she's having small classes for them as well. And on top of that, we started with the RoboCall stuff. So we've introduced plugs as well that give the kids some higher order thinking skills.
I got a, I just got one more question. I'm sorry, you guys.
That's okay.
So I know you said we've been communicating through Parents' Word, emails, what about our RoboCalls?
We do RoboCalls, we do Facebook, we, what are we doing now?
And that's just for the essential survey or just a general?
Everything, it's, all of our communication does go through Parents' Word, which handles all of our email, direct messaging, website posts, Facebook posts, the RoboCall, all of it in one. And right now, we are, we're one of only a handful of schools in the United States that actually will focus that we are one hundred percent connected. So one hundred percent of our families have at least one person that is contactable for all families that comes out. Again, national average is in the seventies, the fact that we're at one hundred. And we have the data to show that our parents, that since we've gone to Parents' Word, our communication and our reception of communication from our parents has drastically increased higher than others.
Just to pat Dr. McGowan on the back, we're doing so well with that communication that Parents' Word is actually asking him to provide PD for other districts and to speak on things because we are doing so well because he put so much effort into ensuring that our process was multifaceted. So thank you guys.
Thanks, Sam.
That's why you can't leave us.
Thank you. Ms. Chantel Cambridge, Principal Heritage Middle School.
Good day. How are you guys?
Good.
Good. So I want to, I want to start off by, we brought up Ms. Smith, so I'm going to go ahead and give her a quick shout out. She actually presented today, I think that's with Dr. Los, we're moving to, she presented her centers to an organization today. And so while we talk about, you know, always getting outside PD and all the things, we really have experts right here in our own space. And so shout out to Ms. Smith for doing her thing, she was nominated a couple of months ago, I don't know if I mentioned it, in a, in a program, and I don't have the details, but I know that she was nominated and so I just wanted to give her her accolades, you know.
Give the flowers, Robert.
So as you know, I like to go back and then come back up. So I'm going to go back first. Spirit Week was a couple of weeks ago and we ended with the pet rally, which kicked off basketball season. Basketball season has been a fun time, fun times. We got our new rally rag, so if you haven't gotten a rally wr- rally rag, let me know and I'll get you one. We had a steady flow of at parent-teacher conferences, that was really good. We always see it, at Heritage, we see the fifth graders show up, the fifth grade parents always show up. It's the other grade levels that we have stagnant participation, but this year it was a consistent flow of conferences and great productive conversations. And so I am grateful for the families who came out this year. I think our model worked and it was, it was a great turnout, so thank you for that. Of course, I'm less about the Heritage Houses, but before I do, I want to talk about family literacy night, that happened as well and it was a success. Shout out to Ms. Schweitzer who did, who kind of took it over. Ms. Brady is the one who has been holding our family literacy nights. And so when we, when she retired last year, it was like, okay, who's going to do this? And so Ms. Schweitzer took the lead and she did a fantastic job. Thank you to this family literacy committee as well, they did a super fantastic job. I attended a host of their family, their fall family event, that was great, as well as Dosi had their Thanksgiving celebration last Friday, that was also great. The food was good, you know, I like to eat mixture of American and Indian traditional meals, so that was also a fun time. Student Council went on their workshop at Comer Elementary last week. So now getting, jumping into the present, Heritage is having a food drive, you look behind you, we are collecting food for those who are less fortunate, we always talk about giving back. And so anybody that wants to participate, obviously, we are open and willing, the food drive ends on the twentieth, so get those, get that stuff in. And then of course, we're supporting the Heritage Houses, we're doing a friendly competition, the house that gets the most point, I mean, that has the most items, obviously will get some type of incentive. Our next house day is next, is upcoming Tuesday, November twenty-fifth, and we're having our house party. This year we changed it a little bit, we usually do the house party on the very first house day, but we wanted to try something different, we're having that house day on a half day. And so we didn't end up having a house party this, the first quarter, so we're trying it for this quarter. And we're incorporating our Eagle Bucks. So we, I know we talked about the Eagle Bucks before, we piggyback off of what Nathan Hill was doing and our Eagle Bucks is a thing. You notice, we've, we combined our Eagle Bucks in our houses together and so the students can use their Eagle Bucks as an incentive to go to the, the school store. The school store is run by our PBC Committee, Ms. Peels doing a fantastic job at making sure that that is running, up and running. And then our Eagle Bucks are electronic, so the kids know how much they have in their accounts. And Mr. Dylan does all the good work for that, so I'm grateful for that as well. Going forward, our winter band and choir concert is Thursday, December fourth, we hope that you guys can come out and support, support the band and choir. Our new Barry Bowl competition is December eleventh, again, shout out to Ms. Schweitzer for holding that down. We'll actually be hosting it here at Heritage, so we'll have the schools come in, they, they usually work in the library, will compete in the library during the daytime, so that's always fun. Lego Robotics, shout out to Ms. Smith again. Lego Robotics competition is December thirteenth, it's a Saturday. She takes the, she and a few other teachers take a group of kids to the school and they compete. This is their third year as a second year, so this is their third year competing. First year, we didn't really know what to do. Second year, we did a little bit better, so we looking for a win this go around. We hope so, but the kids are really working hard. Spending time, you know, there, Ms. Smith is calling like, hey, the kids want to meet on Saturday, is it okay? I'm like, listen lady, you need a break too, but you know, I'm all for supporting the kids. And so I'm grateful that this, this, this group is really into what it is that they're doing. We want to be able to not only have the athletics shining, we also want to have the intellectual things shining as well. The HMS Band is performing at Allstate Arena for the Wolves game on December fourteenth, that's a Sunday, so shout out to Ms. Wagner for doing that on the weekend as well. And I believe that our Thanksgiving break is next week. So excited about that. Does anybody have any questions to me? Good.
No question.
Oh, wait, wait, I got to tell you something. I'm not sure if you guys got an opportunity to see the teachers lounge.
It is amazing. So I think what they're doing is between Mr. Ken and Ms. Cambridge, I think they got the two schools competing against each other. Because when I went to Nathan Hill for that STEAM program, I was like, ooh, Nathan Hill looks good. But then today, Mr. Ken, I saw the boardroom and the teachers lounge, I was like, oh, Ms. Cambridge and Dr. Bill Houston did this furniture and they got the pop of red and not blue. It looked really good.
We popped red all the way through.
They popped red all the way through. And it looked so nice. And then they got the emblem on the wall. Y'all got to, we got to have a tour.
Yes, so we wanted, our, our, our goal was to make it homey. We wanted the teachers to feel, we didn't want it to be like the teachers lounge of the past where you go in there and you're gossiping or whatever, whatever the bad stigmas of the teachers lounge is. And so if we brighten it up, if we add some, add some furniture that kind of gives life, if we.
We make it welcoming.
Yes.
Then they got a full plant.
Yeah, I'm sure.
They got a big one.
We do, we do, yeah, yeah. And the teachers are being amazing in supporting the teachers lounge because they are donating tea and coffee because I said, we can get the things, but y'all got to make sure you supply all, everything. But they are, and they are, they're really showing up. They leave stuff in there for the teachers to share. Ms. Lozano, last week, she brought a whole, and set up a whole table just full of things, just grapes and, you know, structury stuff. Like she just looked out for the teachers. And so we wanted to have that kind of feel so that they do feel welcome coming in. I do want to remind you about our current seven mindset stuff. So we are working on the, we are connected. So here's my quote, "Coming together is a beginning, keeping together is progress, working together is success." You guys have a great day.
Thank you. Mr. Joseph Ken, Ms. from Nathan Hill.
Oh, good evening.
Good evening.
Well, after that, I do want to say that there is room for people that want to read things. There's room. I don't mind sharing. That's good. I do want to start off here though, and we've heard a lot of great things, a big thank you to our parents. I just have said that for a long time, I think we have some wonderful, wonderful, great parents. And those parents turned out for our parent-teacher conferences. I know we were north of two hundred and fifty-some conferences that were there, they were in at all grade levels, and the feedback has been great too. Now, after it was over, I think at least I for sure could take a deep breath, and I think I could say the same thing for district administration too. Because if you're talking about a collaborative piece, everybody worked so hard to get this standard-based grading thing together. From Dr. Pettis, Dr. Los, Dr. Mike, all the way down to the teachers in the classroom and everybody in between. Because the truth of the matter is, we knew what we wanted to hear, but we didn't know that's what we were going to hear. And the idea that this is working for our parents, that they are giving us the feedback, not because we think this is where your child is, or we think this is the grade your child got, but because we can begin pinpointing and saying, this is where we are with your child and the action plan of how we are going to move forward. And that was a wonderful, wonderful conversation I had with our parents. So again, kudos to our parents who showed up and showed out, if you will. Great questions, great communication, it was a good night. Now, if you have your calendars on you, I'm going to help you out a little bit. If you want to get your science on, Wednesday, November nineteenth is Math Science Day, all day at Nathan Hill. And our theme is beginning to come together district-wide. When we talked about the first Math Science Day, we were really talking about showing our kids that science is all around you. It doesn't just happen in science class, it happens all around you. And again, if you link the breadcrumbs together, that's the same trek that we're on for math. Our kids can do math just like everybody else. We have to have the right medicine and the right strategies and that's what we're getting to. So if you want to get your science on, the nineteenth, drop by any time of the day. All teachers, all teams will be doing all kinds of activities with their kids, science activities. We started our, our Mr. Popper's Penguins, which is our one book, one school initiative. The kids are on chapter three right now. And all of this is leading up to our literacy night, which is Tuesday, December second. If you want to come because you got that literacy thing popping in you, drop in that evening because it should be a blast. And again, Mr. Popper's Penguins is going to culminate that night. This is Ms. Angelo and the Literacy Committee. Again, our parents have always turned out, it should be another exciting time. We started planning for our winter concert, and the annual winter concert this year looks like it's going to fall on December seventeenth. So if you have a little music that you need to, you know, you got you moving around and you're just bouncing around and you want to hear some good singing going on from our kids, drop by December seventeenth. We have the winter carnival being planned right now. Because you know what, we want to end this first half of the year, we want to end it in good spirits, the same as we began before everyone goes on the winter break. So Thursday, December eighteenth, if you feel like you want to get your playoff, all you got to do is drop by all day. Kids will be taking turns, doing different events, participating in different activities. And depending on how free you are, we'll be more than happy to put you to work because we always need people to help out. And then finally, let me finish up with this, Student Council's been working hard, they're, they've been fundraising, their fundraiser actually ends on the nineteenth, they're collecting all kinds of goods. They are trying to collect goods to send to Jamaica, which you know is hit and ravaged, if you will, by the storm. So again, they've been working hard to do that while the social workers at Nathan Hill have begun a food drive also, I want to make sure I use the right words here, Let Share and Care, it's a Let Share and Care drive in which we have a lot of people around us that simply need help as well. So again, a lot of our kids are involved in things that are bigger than us, and again, that puts something in place that they don't get to see necessarily until you move self out the way. And when you can move self out the way, then I think we've done the job of showing them that the world is a big place, everybody has a place in it and you can be a productive citizen as well. So otherwise, we hope to see you in some of those events and I'll look forward to it. Have a good one.
Thank you, Mr. Ken. Policy Committee has the second readings. Those are for you to review. Item K. Excuse me. Record the motions, K one, record the motions, waive and adopt the second reading of policies listed above as presented. Motion.
Thank you.
Motion by Ambrose, second by the Stewart. Ambrose.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Constance.
Yes.
Burke, yes, Smith.
Yes.
Terrell.
Yes.
And Hill.
Yes.
Motion passes.
To, to approve the expenses for Dr. Erica Hillhouse Pettis Superintendent to attend the AASA, American Association of School Administrators National Conference on Education, to be held February twelfth to the fourteenth, twenty twenty-six, located at the Music City Center in Nashville, Tennessee, all expenses paid. Motion.
Excuse me. I'm sorry, I wanted to have some conversation around that. Okay. Okay. Um, I attended the National Conference of Hugh this year and it was such a great experience. So I do understand the importance of the national conferences is to gain, share best practices of the districts and so forth and see if they're applicable to bring back to our district. So my question to you, Dr. Pettis, you're going to these conferences, how do you provide the takeaways to both the administration and the board? And have you implemented any of those best practices here in the district?
This would be my first one I've ever attended, but when I do go to conferences, when all the administrators go to conferences, we have a management team, we need five weekly, and we do shares. We send each other articles to read, I've never really shared it with the board, but we share with one, with John, and that's how we come up with practices. In fact, that's how we come up with our social emotional curriculums as, as a whole. But we do do takeaways and we, we do walk through to make sure things are implemented.
Anything else? Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ambrose, second by the Stewart. Ambrose.
Yes.
The Stewart.
Yes.
Constance.
Yes.
Burke, yes, Smith.
Yes.
Terrell.
Yes.
And Hill.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item three is going to be after, close session, you all want to start with that now? Item three is to select a company to facilitate study with school district one seventy-one strategic activity.
I'm sorry, you said we need to go to a closed session?
I said, we look by action.
Okay, I thought we were motioning to actually go.
Like I said in the email, if you all had a company that you all wanted to recommend to let us know, but no one was turning to that, so. Do you have a recommendation?
Can you go to a closed session?
I'm sorry.
We can go to a closed session.
Okay.
Here at item four, recommend motion to approve the snow removal contract with American Lawn as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Second by the Stewart, second by the Ambrose, the Stewart.
Yes.
Ambrose.
Yes.
Constance.
Yes.
Burke, yes, Smith.
Yes.
Terrell.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
We're at item five, recommend motion to approve the tax levy for twenty twenty-five as presented. One, resolution approving the tax levy and certificate of tax levy. Two, loss factor resolution. Three, resolution authorizing reduction of certain fund levies for the twenty twenty-five levy year.
Motion.
Second. Motion by LaStur, second by Terrell. LaStur.
Yes.
Terrell.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ambrose.
Yes.
Burks, yes, Smith.
Yes.
And Hill.
Yes.
Motion passed.
We're at item six, uh, to authorize the law firm of Petrae, Petrae, uh, Gleason Oil and Ezo LLC as its legal representative for property tax proceedings as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Burks, second by Ambrose. Burks, yes, Ambrose.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Terrell.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
LaStur.
Yes.
And Thompson.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Item seven, to approve the Echo Executive Board of Directors' regular board meeting minutes of September sixteen, twenty twenty-five, August twelfth, twenty twenty-five, public hearing budget, uh, fiscal year twenty-six, September fifteen, twenty twenty-five minutes, administrative contracts following, following before Echo, Maddie Young, Susan Norris, independent contractor agreement with every special child LLC as presented. Motion.
Second. Motion by Ambrose, second by Terrell. Ambrose.
Yes.
Terrell.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
LaStur.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Burks, yes, and Smith.
Yes.
Motion passed.
We're at item L, visitor statements. Uh, visitors have, they'll have two minutes per person. A total of thirty minutes will be allocated for visitor comments.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm just here to, um, remind all of my parents who participated in the fall fundraiser that pickup is this Wednesday, the nineteenth, from three to seven. So once you pick up your student from here, just come on over to Nathan Hale, but that's all be with both schools pickup. So it's from three to seven. Real simple, just pick up your kid and come right over there. We do not have enough freezer space for cookie dough. Now, I've been blessed, knock on wood. If I have any extra, God has blessed me with snow, and I'm able to keep it in the breezeway, keep the cookie dough cold. But I don't think I'm gonna be, it's not looking good for me to snow this year. So, please, 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 if you can, on Wednesday, the nineteenth, between three to seven, if you don't get off to work in time, please feel free and reach out to me. I've been known to stay later if you have to come a little bit later than seven. I will wait, because like I said, I don't have enough storage for the cookie dough. So, um, thanks again for participating, the nineteenth, three to seven.
Now, what kind of cookies is it?
Otis. When I pick it up, I'm probably.
Otis Smuckmeyer.
Yeah, Otis Smuckmeyer, which is one of our top things that we do sell. And if you need me to come pick up the cookie dough. Thank you, Dan. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other statements? All right, we are at motion, uh, item M, recommend motion to move in the closed session for the purpose of, uh, appointment conversations, student discipline performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district. Superintendent, please. Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ambrose, second by, by, uh, Brad, uh, Ambrose.
Yes.
Burks, yes, Smith.
Yes.
Terrell.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
LaStur.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Motion passed.
You only have one thing to come back with. December three, back.
Um, I just wanna write it down so I can read myself.
But this should be, this actually should be.
What's the question?
This next level course solution.
That's the company answer one. And then that one.
The execution.
The level.
The say execution.
On Trump here, right?
Right? Nice. That was quite a good question. It would be on the agenda. There it is, real fast, what was the company that you, that you got the example of?
I sent this to everybody, the strategic plan.
We can use that now?
Huh?
We can use that now?
I sent Jeff to state, that's my problem with you missing. I don't know, he like, we just review this strategic plan. Um, there's our educational.
You got them all on the. Educational leadership.
Solution.
We got about all, all of those three companies?
That's what we had. He tabled the last time, it was three, then went down to two. So if you start over, these gonna be, this is the strategic plan, yeah. If you wanna start a gym, right?
I will be able to start until.
About the back to the gym, I'm still kind of.
Can't check the coasting chair.
Soon, soon. Just. Everybody okay with, with the two? Were y'all looking for, looking for a, additional people? Because.
Listen to me.
That works.
I will go on the two.
Okay, this is. Second, uh, call order nine oh nine. Red item three, which I think should be two motions because we have a vote for two. Different, um, companies. Uh, a recommend motion to hire educational leadership solutions. As the company that will facilitate Sunnybrook School District One Seventy-One Strategic Action Plan as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by birth, second by Ambrose. Birch, no. Ambrose?
Yes.
Stuart Thomas Smith?
No.
Correa?
Yes.
Eel?
No.
The steward?
I'm sorry, y'all. Go ahead. Wait, y'all said we got two motions on it?
We gonna have two.
Yep, took only two.
Birch.
Because you have to choose between the two.
Nothing else was presented to us. And then the one had, uh.
No, we did have some, we did have three presented.
Yeah, three.
We did have three presented, one withdrew.
Yeah. These, these, these type of organizations, they work out in year and the seasons.
It's educational leadership, we did have one first.
We were on that one. Oh, that's the one we bought, no? Yes. Okay. Yes.
Okay.
Thompson?
No.
Motion failed.
Alright, to hire next level core solutions as the company that will facilitate Sunnybrook School District One Seventy-One Strategic Action Plan as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Birch, second by Thompson. Birch, yes, Thompson?
Yes.
Ambrose?
No.
Smith?
Yes.
Correa?
No.
Eel?
Yeah.
The steward?
No.
Motion passes.
I understand. Um, most been to adjourn all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is nine eleven.